Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, June the first, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type hand up. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We welcome our guests who are on the line with us this evening for their presentations and delegations. Given that June is National Indigenous History Month in Canada, we will begin our June meetings with the land acknowledgement. This evening, I will ask that immediately following the land acknowledgement, we take a moment of silence in memory of the 215 children whose remains have been discovered on the grounds of the Canluks Residential School. Thank you.
Each of us has a relationship to the natural environment, the land, water, earth, the habitat, and ecosystems. Land acknowledgements provide us with an opportunity to offer recognition, respect to the original inhabitants of the regions that we live in and work on. There are many things that we can do to go beyond simply reading a land acknowledgement script. To make it more meaningful, we need to consider that we are, in fact, acknowledging not only the ancestral lands, but also the historical and complex intersections of settler impacts on indigenous histories, economies, ecologies, livelihood, well-being, and governance structures. A territorial acknowledgement is not an endpoint in the journey of reconciliation. Actions create conditions for true reconciliation and create a foundation for restoring, renewing, or developing a new relationship with indigenous peoples. For hundreds of years, the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee, the Atawadon, the Potawatomi, the Wamdat, and Lenapi nations have sought to walk gently on this land. They assisted the first European travelers to this territory and shared their knowledge for survival in what was at times a harsh climate. Under consultations from elders, knowledge holders from the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, and Six Nations of the Grand River Territory, the Indigenous Education Advisory Committee, along with Halton Catholic District School Board, created this land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawadon.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding the Great Lake.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today, on these treaty learned.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's an honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Ammonals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Gubert, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Oh God, great Spirit and Creator, we praise you for your gifts that surround us. For the gift of the land that gives us food, shelter, and water. For the gift of the sun that gives us warmth and light to all that grows. For the gifts of the moon and stars which you have arranged for your glory. For the gifts of language and culture through which your peoples praise you and share the most deeply held values you have engraved on their hearts. Come upon us, O divine healer, and open our eyes to the injustices brought against our indigenous peoples, their language and culture in Canada's Indian residential schools. Give us repentant hearts that ache with sorrow for their violence against First Nations families and their children. Give us determined hearts that refuse to stand by when the dignity of our indigenous brothers and sisters is trampled. Give us healing hearts that beat with the drum of Jesus's gospel to defend and honor our indigenous neighbor, their language, and way of life. Give us flaming hearts that burn with love for you, who come to us in every human face, in every language and culture, in every gift of creation. Make us stewards of one another's dignity, of one another's safety, of one another's lands, of one another's right to a cultural identity, as unique peoples, as gifts to the human family, as your beloved children. Pour out your healing on all who suffered in Canada's Indian residential schools, on bodies, minds, and spirits wounded through abuse, on hearts wounded through separation and disdain, on families wounded through trauma and anguish that still torment over the course of generations. Jesus, gentle Savior, forgiving and humble heart, good shepherd, divine healer, great lover of all peoples, we offer you our sorrow for the wrongs committed against our First Nations children in Canada's Indian residential schools. We offer you our desire to walk with our First Nations brothers and sisters to journey with them on the path of truth, healing, and reconciliation. As we share this earthly pilgrimage to our heavenly homeland, where every tear will be wiped away and every sorrow will be turned to joy. Give us one heart and one mind to walk forward together along this path in the love and strength of your spirit, in truth, reconciliation, and peace. We make this prayer in the power of your most holy name. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Please rise for our national anthem and oath of citizenship.
Thank you, trustee Gubert. Item 1.2, motions adopted in camera. Vice Chair Duarte, please read the motions adopted in camera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motions adopted in camera. The following motions are adopted in camera. Resolved that the Halton Catholic School Board approved the appointment of Lizelle Rogas-Silva to the Special Education Advisory Committee, CAC, as representative of Autism Ontario, effective June 2021 until November 2022. And resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the appointment of Lisa Anderson to the Special Education Advisory Committee, CAC, as alternate representative for Autism Ontario, effective June 2021 until November 2022. Information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Retirements. Joanne Platt retired, effective May 31st, 2021. John Psycho will retire, effective June 30th, 2021. Department head appointments. Angela Brayson and Melissa Culver appointed as department heads, effective September 1st, 2021, for a period of up to four years.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Trustee Agnew? Sorry, trustee Guzzo, I see your hand up first.
Thank you for you, Mr. Chair. I have two items.
Okay, please proceed.
Notice of motions.
Okay.
The first one is titled "Data Collection."
So item 10.9 will be "Data Collection."
Thank you. And the second one is "Menstrual Equity."
So 10.10 is "Menstrual Equity."
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I as well have two notices of motion.
Please go ahead.
The first one is titled "Indigenous Studies."
So 10.11 becomes "Indigenous Studies," and you're next.
Is entitled "Indigenous Equity and Human Rights Roadmap."
Okay, so 10.12 is, sorry, indigenous?
Indigenous Equity and Human Rights Roadmap.
I just couldn't read my writing, sorry.
No worries.
Okay, thank you. So that is 10.12.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing that there are none, we will move to approve the agenda as amended. Vice Chair Duarte?
Sorry, I don't have my hand up.
No, I'm sorry, how do you vote? Sorry, I was being... Oh, sorry, did we, oh, we didn't, did I, I didn't call for a mover in a seconder? Sorry, I was trying to save so much time that...
I'll move it. Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew, seconded by? Vice Chair Duarte? I'm sorry, I threw everybody off there. So now we'll go to a reported vote. Trustee, Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Presto, Hurnchernata?
In favor.
Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rossi is not with us tonight, in case anybody is wondering, I'm not skipping him, he's not with us. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's also in favor, so the motion carries. Number three, declaration of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Oh.
Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Item 10.5 deals with budget. Occasional teachers' salaries are mentioned in this report. My wife is an occasional teacher with the board, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest on this item.
Sorry, could you repeat the number again?
10.5, is that right?
10.5 is Halton Transportation.
Oh, I have no conflicts there. Is it 10.7?
Uh, yes, 10.7, okay.
I think it is 10.7, and if I could please be changed on the submission that I made as well, please. Thank you, Rosie.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa?
I would like to follow that declaration as well, for the same reasons.
Okay, thank you. If you could follow up with your written submission, we'd appreciate it. Okay? So we are on to item four, presentations. Item 4.1, 2021 Educational Development Charges by Law Amendments. I welcome Watson and Associates to our meeting this evening, who will be presenting about EDCs. This is a recorded presentation, so I'll ask trustees that they hold their questions to the end. Please begin when you're ready.
Just some technical issues.
We're having some technical difficulties with the presentation, so we're going to go to item 4.2, STEM. Superintendent Kroll, if you're ready, and then we can come back to 4.1.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and trustees. Hopefully you can see my screen. We are ready to go. Can someone just confirm that they can see that, and then I'll be unhappy to get started? Okay, great. So good evening, trustees. It's great to be here in front of you this evening. I've brought some help tonight to talk to you about the STEM Steering Committee summary report. So presenting with me tonight will be Patrick Brophy, who's the vice principal of Corpus Christi Secondary School, Chris Kalistchik, who's the vice principal at Assumption Catholic Secondary School, Mark Ives, who's our curriculum consultant for OEAP, and finally, we have Kevin Wong, who's the principal at St. Kateri Techakuita, who'll be joining us tonight. So very happy to be here. As you recall, this STEM Steering Committee was, came out of a motion from the law, from a board meeting on June 2nd, 2020, to look at how we can increase the profile and interest in STEM activities, co-curricular and extracurricular. So the STEM Steering Committee was struck in October 2020, which included our Director of Education, the Chair and Vice Chair of our board, two of our other trustees as well, elementary and secondary teachers, representatives of elementary and secondary EWECTA, elementary and secondary administrators, members of our curriculum, student success teams, and we had an external representative from McMaster University. So our work has been, while we've had many meetings, we sort of originally thought that three or four might be enough to do the work. As we got into the work, we found that it was, although we were making process, it certainly was a lot of thinking and a lot of heavy lifting to get to this, to get to where we are. So we, some of the activities that we undertook were to look at current HCSB initiatives, examine what programs, resources, and initiatives we have across the system, gathering information from other school districts, higher education, and government resources to help generate a STEM strategy. As we were concluding the work, it was a suggestion of one of our trustees, actually Vincent Intomasi, that we come up with a vision statement to help communicate what it is that we're hoping to accomplish with this STEM strategy, and really happy to share the vision statement with you now. And you'll see evidence of the first one. So in the photos that are sort of interlaced through the presentation, you'll see students, HCSB students, involved in STEM activities across our board. So first thing we believe is that there are already excellent initiatives across Halton Catholic District School Board. We have a strong foundation for this strategy. Secondly, we believe that STEAM education, and I'll come back to why we're saying STEAM education and not STEM in a minute. Actually, Patrick Brophy will explain that in more detail. We believe that STEAM education can be successfully implemented across our system and across all subjects. Thirdly, we believe we can increase engagement in STEAM for all students. Fourthly, we see strong connections between our existing curriculum, our entire Catholic graduate school expectations, and our STEAM education. And finally, we believe this work requires dedicated staff, professional development, and resources to ensure success. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Brophy, and he's going to talk about sort of the overarching philosophies behind the strategy.
There we go. I was on mute. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Jeff. So I'm going to talk about four overarching philosophies that are guiding what we're working on here with the STEAM Committee, and the first one is defining the difference between STEM versus STEAM. So many will probably have heard at least STEM before, and that's because that's an acronym that actually has been around since like the mid 1990s. It came out of American education policy, where STEM, standing for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And this was kind of a push, an initiative, to try to increase engagement and exposure to those types of disciplines. Because the belief, and it's one that's obviously still held, is that at the core of the modern knowledge-based economy, that the jobs that are going to transform the world around us are going to be those that are connected to STEAM. However, as that continued to take traction, the STEM initiatives across the globe, there was a move towards including A into the acronym and turning it into STEAM. And actually, the origin of that is that the president of a big tech firm, Qualcomm Technologies, was at a big economic forum and said that when he was looking at all of his engineers and his computer programmers and all these individuals who are supposed to be innovative, they were lacking a lot of creativity and lacking appreciation of how to consider the human elements to these complex problems. And what he said was, well, we are... And what he said was, what we were missing was the A, which is the arts. So it's about bringing in that piece, and uh I think we can all appreciate, as we've kind of navigated through this pandemic, um that yeah, of course, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics plays a part in uh everything that's been happening to try to overcome COVID-19, but at the same time, we would definitely be um remiss if we weren't considering how important it is to always be considering that human element. And that's why um as a board, as a committee, uh we've optioned to move towards the STEAM initiative and making sure that uh in, on top of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, we are also bringing in those arts and humanities pieces to it, because it's it's the well-rounded piece. So Jeff, if you just want to move forward for me? Thank you, sir. Okay, so um STEAM, though, has a lot of uh connections either to the curriculum documents that uh staff are uh are tasked with instructing upon and also the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations. So as a Catholic institution, uh we must also, we must emphasize clear connections between the work we do in STEAM uh with our core mandate of uh trying to grow joyful discipleship and fan those embers of faith within our school communities. STEAM initiatives are very much rooted into 21st century competencies, which are critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, global citizenship, self-directed learning, and you'd hear those a lot, but they also, there's a lot of connection between all those 21st century competencies and the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations. And that um really, through teaching and through um designing our instruction and our pedagogy around the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations, we're meeting a lot of what is a part of STEAM initiative. So I encourage you that if you're interested in learning more about um the connection between uh the Ontario Catholic School Graduate Expectations and 21st century competencies, there's a really good ICE monograph series, which is called A Curriculum for the Heart of Young People, and it breaks down the connections between both. So you'll just have to take my word for it, I guess, in this truncated presentation, that there's a lot of uh connections. Uh, and that's, that's at the the forefront of what we're considering and one of our philosophies. Uh, in addition, with respect to curriculum, uh the work of the STEAM initiative uh is very much rooted into the updated curriculums that are being rolled out by the ministry. In the math curriculum that uh was the elementary panel, um there was a lot of, let's check my note here, critical thinking, inquiry, coding, real-world applications uh that were deeply rooted into that curriculum document. And we're going to see something very similar implemented at the secondary panel in the near term. So consequently, the work uh of this committee and uh the initiatives that we're suggesting and trying to work towards, they're timely because they're going to support the curriculum in both panels. Okay, so uh the idea here about increasing connections to STEAM in all subjects and disciplines is the the key idea here is that um all teachers are STEAM teachers. So there is kind of this belief that um that STEAM or STEM has to be uh only taught and only controlled by those who are in those uh traditional uh hard disciplines, be it uh science, technology, education, and mathematics. But uh STEAM is really trying to encourage more of us focusing on how that these principles can be applied in all disciplines and in both panels. So uh focusing more on problem solving, focusing more on critical thinking, understanding that there's a place for interdisciplinary learning. So we see that a lot in elementary, where there's uh blending between multiple subject matters, where we work on a complex problem that can span those, and trying to encourage that type of thinking and ability to kind of web our 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 knowledge base together to start learning and trying to figure out these complex problems and coming to solutions for them. So um that's, that that's the goal of what we're working on through the STEAM Committee as well. And then finally, about increasing engagement in STEAM for all. So you don't need to be a methodologist to realize that there's inequalities and underrepresentation in traditional STEM fields. So in one of our first meetings, Director Daly was at it, and uh he had asked very pointedly, how does STEAM benefit all learners? How will the work of this committee and the initiatives we put forth uh when they're implemented, are we considering the diversity found throughout our classrooms in Halton Catholic? And how are we rising to, so that it benefits all? And uh that's definitely a guiding philosophy that we're trying to uh work towards. And we believe that collecting data and then leveraging that. So uh one of the guiding philosophies here is to leverage and uh a leverage-enhanced collection of data and utilize that data to determine who's underserved and where we should go next with respect to the next phases of STEAM and how we can bring more into it. So uh this work is very much, this philosophy is very much tied into uh Ontario's most recent Equity Action Plan. And that document, which calls for boards to collect and analyze voluntary demographic and perceptual data, um to enable um to to enable us to be more precise on how we address systemic barriers and uh towards student success and bring in greater involvement. Yeah, so anyways, it's uh those are the four overarching philosophies that are kind of guiding the work that we've done. And I'll hand it over to the next one, Jeff.
Sure, thanks. Um, next we have Kevin Wong and Chris Kaliszczyk that are going to talk about the system level. We're going to talk about our strategy next, so how to accomplish these uh goals that we have. Uh, and they're going to go through our system-level recommendations. So I'll turn it over to you, Kevin and Chris.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, from a system-level um point of view, the committee is recommending um sort of six different overarching areas. The first one being increased cross-panel initiatives. As you might be aware, um each year, elementary administration and secondary administration get together a variety of times throughout the year and work on some cross-panel initiatives. Some of those are curricular in nature. Um, others have um the grade seven and eights come and visit the secondary schools to become acclimatized to the environment, um to sort of dip their toe in what they'll be experiencing in the future. And we are looking to increase those cross-panel initiatives with direct connections to STEAM. Um, to give you an example, uh recently, we have started to pilot a program where some of our secondary students, about 60 of them, from Corpus Christi, Assumption, and Bishop Reading, were trained by McMaster University students and professors around coding, and they are currently going into our elementary classrooms virtually and helping teach the students uh the coding expectations of um the curriculum there. So it's a good way to connect our secondary students to our element, dedicated staff. Um, as Jeff alluded to, or Mr. Kroll alluded to at the beginning of this presentation, it uh is very much a lot of heavy lifting. Um, we do believe we need dedicated staff in the curriculum department that have a clear focus on STEAM and these initiatives, um whether that's at the consultant position or itinerant position. It just can't be an added on. This is something that we really need to uh dig into doing the work. Uh, and it's going to take staff in order to um support their teachers in our classrooms, administrators in the building um from a curriculum standpoint, uh as well as from an extracurricular standpoint. Uh, lastly, um we need some dedicated project funding. Some of these initiatives, not all, but some of them do require technology, and that technology um can be expensive, does look at um things like uh professional development for our teachers in our classrooms, what we can do to release them so they can become more comfortable with these initiatives. And there is a shelf life to some of that technology uh and that turnover. So there will be needed some dedicated funding um to move us forward throughout uh the implementation of this entire plan. Mr. Wong?
Thank you very much. Uh, also, obviously, that comes with this is making sure that we've got the resources for both staff and students to utilize. Um, some examples could be new things like Makerspaces. Um, it could be some of the technology items such as 3D printers, laser cutters, um even devices such that we can create apps and and design for coding. For the next one, for competitions, I just want to recognize some of the students that we've had in our board that have had some success. I do know that I've missed a few, but recently, we had a student from Holy Trinity who took gold at the Ontario Skills Competition um in Landscape Design. Uh, we had two students from Loyola um who placed second at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. Um, so these are just some examples of contests and competitions that are out there. They include uh coding competitions uh from Echo and amongst others, um as well as looking at things like field trips that can enhance, you know, student learning, where we can make connections about what we do in the classroom to what we do in the field. And the last one, which is really important for all of us, is that we believe that all students have the capability of learning. So sometimes, unfortunately, there are barriers, um and we want to make sure that we, as a school system, are able to remove those barriers so that if a student is interested um in pursuing any of these future pathways in STEAM, they have the accessibility to participate, to learn, um and to be part of of the school atmosphere, uh regardless of whatever the situation they may come from. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, next I'm going to turn it over to Mark Ives, and Mark Ives is going to talk about recommendations for implementation at the school level.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Uh, yeah, so our committee did come up with a number of recommendations for the school level in addition to the to the board level, system level. Um, and and Kevin did mention a couple of those uh different concepts about Makerspace. And uh really, we uh really had a lot of discussions around the need for a a place to make this all happen, whether that's a dedicated classroom or it's a shared uh space within a school, a number of schools, where 3D printers and other technology can be, can be housed and and be used and shared between all the parties that um would be involved in that student activity. Um, in addition to that, we uh discussed uh champions that are required at the school level to make these projects and activities happen. Um, there's already a number, a number of these happening uh throughout our board, which Jeff mentioned right at the beginning. And I I have three that I that I have on my list here, but there's so many out there that that um come to mind right off the bat. So I I don't want to diminish the work they're doing, but I I will uh list a couple of the key, very successful programs in our board. One of them is Robert Balasch at at Holy Trinity, who runs the first robotics team, um does a very good job with that, and has recently started up a specialist high schools major program there, uh which is also involved in the robotics program through Mechatronics. Deborah Polak at St. Thomas Aquinas runs a a very fantastic and successful uh specialist high schools major program in the health and wellness um economic sector. And Mario Ferko has been running one of our very um mature programs in the Electrical O耶APP Program, Bishop Reading. So those are just some of the examples of how a a school-level champion can really uh take a an economic sector or a career path or a subject and make it thrive. And um really, that's a requirement uh that we believe uh is is something that's needed to uh to really make STEAM a successful program throughout our board. Um, other things that we've seen that are very successful, uh so this would be guest speakers for all the STEAM initiatives across our board. And and uh those guest speakers could be anything from uh recent graduates that are now pursuing a career path in one of these sectors and would come back and encourage other students and share their story about their successes. Um, we could harness community partnerships that already exist um and encourage and and invite local business leaders into our schools to help guide students into a career path that is in demand in those sectors as well. Um, and uh this is something that Patrick already mentioned about developing interdisciplinary learning at the secondary level. Uh, really want to promote opportunities and create an environment for educators to work together to help develop cross-curricular lessons and uh student activities related to STEAM. And uh finally, our last recommendation at the school level is to uh create an environment where uh teachers are are um confident and supported with creating new and expanding current specialist high schools major programs and uh also the Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program throughout our board. So together, we uh we came up with these recommendations at the school and and board level, and I will pass it off to the next speaker.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Uh, next, we're going to talk about our sort of professional development strategy. So we sort of see three um areas in which we'd like to uh do sort of unroll our professional development. So first, we recognize that there would be definitely a need for professional development for staff. Uh, we know that there's a number of available resources uh within our own system. Uh, in speaking to McMaster University, um the the representative on the committee mentioned several times that they have a number of staff uh that would be willing, that we would have student alumni that are willing to come and work with us uh to help build capacity across the system. Uh, in this year, we've been able to sort of leverage the ability to do virtual PD, any synchronous PD. Uh, so we have a lot more sort of tools in the toolbox to be able to deliver that professional development. The second thing we think is really important is the ability, is having dedicated writing teams. So again, leveraging the expertise we have within our own system, creating specific HCSB resources. Um, we think that that's really important, and that's usually takes the um the form of of summer writing teams. And then finally, we see offering additional qualification courses in STEAM through Halton Catholic District School Board. So our intention would be that we would like to offer courses that are, that are um for teacher qualifications, but that have a specific uh focus on STEAM education. And so inquiry, uh inquiry-based learning, pro, design process. Um, and we have to see that that will be another way in which we can leverage um opportunities for our staff. Just indulge me for a second. In the report provided to trustees, we did um provide a uh draft timeline. Uh, I'm just going to switch to show you how we think that timeline will work. So you can see in the timeline that we're sort of, where you can see where we are. It says May 2021. Uh, that was this presentation, and we're currently going through the budget process for that as well. This is the sort of the point where we're presenting to you trustees. Uh, and then we would foresee, um providing that this um is accepted by the board trustees, we would then move forward in posting for dedicated STEAM staff. In the beginning of the school year 2021, 2022, we begin the cross-panel initiatives. In the fall of of 2021, we begin our professional development. We'd work with schools to further develop those dedicated STEAM spaces. We would present to uh council of chairs. In the winter, we would work to develop those STEAM additional qualification courses and bring an interim report to the board of trustees. In the spring of 2022, we would reengage with the budget process, and we anticipate our first STEAM competitions taking place boardwide. Summer 2022, we would have our STEAM curriculum writing teams. Fall of 2022, we would roll out our school-level STEAM champions, bring another report to the board of trustees about the the success and the challenges so far. And then in the winter of 2022, we would re, we would revisit this action plan, see what our next steps are. So in conclusion, uh we're very pleased to be able to bring the work of this committee to you. Um, and we hope that you you will uh work with us to implement this in full. We think it's, you know, order for it to succeed requires a collective effort, dedicated staff and resources and professional development. We believe undertaking this initiative in full will increase student interest and participation in STEAM opportunities, both co-curricular and extracurricular, and will build on the solid foundation already found across the Halton Catholic District School Board. This was the work of a lot of people. Um, usually, I would kind of go through and thank each of them individually, but there ended up being 25 of us that put our heads together to do this work. Uh, I would like to acknowledge the four trustees that were part of this. So trustee, or Vice Chair Duert, uh Chair Murphy, trustee Tomasi, trustee Johann Chanata, and also Chris Kaliszczyk, who was our co-chair, uh along with trustee Duert. So thank you to all of these individuals for the hard work that they've put in. I think it was probably more than they thought they were signing up for when we started the work. But we're really proud of the work that's been done up until this point and really proud to be sharing it with you tonight. At this point, happy to answer any questions that that trustees may have.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Kroll. I see trustee Agnew has your hand up. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Um, you can tell that a lot of work has gone into this, um and it's um, I think it's exciting, and I I definitely think that um it's a bright future for our STEM program. Um, and again, a lot of initiatives, I think a lot of thought has been put into this, and and I'm really happy to see that. I did just have a question around, and I'm glad that you, um, I'm glad that, what, I think it was Mr. Wong that spoke with respect to equitable access. Um, and so I'm glad that that was mentioned, because certainly, you know, uh there are a number of our students who, I think, um have challenges um in being able to participate in some of these uh programs. But I'm just wondering, when I looked at the committee, I don't see any, I might have missed it, so please, I I apologize. I didn't see any one from Spec Ed, and I don't know if you did have someone from Spec on in the committee. Um, if you didn't, is there a plan to bring this forward to CAC for participation or to have another set of eyes on things, um especially from the equitable access? You know, if we're looking to remove any of those possible systemic barriers, um especially physical ones, uh that would be, I think, extremely helpful. So I'm just curious about that.
We didn't have specific Spec Ed staff. We certainly did. Definitely would go to experts, you know, to sort of make sure that we're getting the right direction around creating equitable access for all students. So I certainly hear you loud and clear, trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess my, so thank you. And I, again, I think maybe perhaps bringing this presentation to CAC would be, you know, again, a great opportunity to engage with the committee there, maybe get some feedback and some ideas. And I think that'd be maybe a good, a good starting point. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're more than happy to come and present to CAC as well.
Vice Chair Duert, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I still have a comment here. Just want to thank Superintendent Kroll for doing the presentation tonight, along with our principals, vice principals, and teachers and staff who are presenting tonight on STEAM/STEM. They all look very excited and they're engaged. So I will save my comments for later, for when the item is presented with the reports, but I just want to say that I'm really proud with what we have achieved over this year and a half and with our extremely competent staff. And I really look forward to you continuing the work that you have been doing in STEAM in your schools. Thank you so much.
Trustees, do we have any other questions? I would like to comment, from our first meeting, I said to myself, there's no way we're going to get our hands around this. This is a huge, it's a huge opportunity, it's a huge challenge with so many avenues that you could go just to try and get your, get your head around it. And then, then as each meeting progressed, it was getting tighter and tighter, and I was like, wow, this is, this is pretty impressive. I learned that we have great STEAM and STEM programs in place that are successful and have been long-running. I, I learned that we have enthusiastic, motivated, highly competent leaders who, who are excited and want to take on this challenge, which, let's face it, is, is extra work, but, but, but really love it and are passionate. And there really isn't any limitations, where I really was thinking in the box, where it's, it's really science, it's technology, it's kids in a lab with a computer. It really isn't. It can be adapted to all disciplines, to languages, to arts, to everything. And that's really the way the future is evolving. So, so I really enjoyed watching, I really didn't participate, but I was watching. I really enjoyed being part of the group and seeing, seeing it come together and evolve. And, and I'm very proud of the work that the committee's done. And I look to the future to see in two, three, and five years where this program is. I think it's going to be fantastic. So, so great job. Thank you very much. Is there any other trustees that had any questions? If not, we'll, we'll thank our presenters, and we'll look to see if we're able to go to the EDC presentation.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee, trustee O'Brien.
Is there not an action item related to STEM?
There is. It's, it's following under 8.7.
Okay, so we will just deal with that then, correct?
Right, right. Thank you.
Presentation tonight is to provide some information to the public and the board of trustees on the board's proposed EDC amendment. I'm going to start by providing a little bit of context by looking at the board's existing rates, a little bit of history as to how we arrived here, and then we'll get into some of the methodology and the recalculation of the charge. So a little bit of context, so the existing EDC bylaw covers the entire region of Halton. The board passed its existing EDC bylaw back in June 30th, 2018, came into force July 4th, 2018. And that bylaw was enacted with a term of only one year, and it was enacted at the board's pre-existing 2013 EDC rates. And those were $2,269 per residential unit and 58 cents per square foot on non-residential gross floor area. And the reason that that bylaw was enacted with those existing rates and only for a term of one year was largely because of discussions and an agreement made with the Ministry of Education and the government at that time, really with regard to some transition that was occurring with regard to the old legislation and the new legislation that we'll talk about in a minute. And important to note that the charge is allocated 85% to residential development and to 15% to non-residential development. So a little bit about the legislative change and the freeze that I, that I just spoke about. So back in 2017, 18, when the board was undergoing its last EDC renewal process, there were some changes made to the legislation with regard to EDCs. And in particular, what that change that was made that impacted the board at that time was a change to Ontario Regulation 2098, and that was Ontario Regulation 43818. And what that did is it basically froze EDCs. And what the regulation said is that whatever your EDC rate was on August 31st, 2018, if you had to renew that bylaw, you were able to renew the bylaw, but it had to be at that same rate. So that, that's really what we were talking about a couple of minutes ago, when we talked about the board's 2018 rates initially being the same as their 2013 rates. There were then some further changes made to the legislation in the spring of 2019. And what it really did was thaw that freeze. So it removed the EDC rate freeze that was in effect. And what it did is it included a provisional phase-in for EDC rates. And what it said is that your rate can now be phased in over a period of time, subject to certain rate increases. So your residential rate can go up by $300 over the existing rate, or 5%, whichever was greater. And on the non-residential side, it can increase by 5% over the existing rate. And then for each subsequent year of the bylaw, you could increase it by another $300 or 5%, subject to a maximum that we'll talk about in a little bit. So that was really what replaced the initial freeze, was this phase-in legislation. So then, in 2019, because of that new legislation, and what the board, and the board was permitted to increase its rates, the board amended its original 2018 bylaw. So it amended that bylaw on May 14th, 2019, and, and that amendment was for exactly what we just spoke about, to first of all, increase the rates, and also to increase the term of the bylaw. As I mentioned, that, that initial passage in 2018 was done for one year. It was now extended out to the full maximum five years. And we'll look at what that phase-in table looked like. So again, going on the very left were the 2018 rates that were frozen from 2013, $2,269 residential and 58 cents per square foot, non-residential. And then you can see the phase-in that I spoke about. So $300 per year on the residential side, 5% per year on the non-residential side. And then that maximum rate I spoke about, you see that in year five, it doesn't increase by the full $300, but it actually stops at $3,648. And you see just beside that, it says 2018 proposed maximum EDC rate was $3,0648. So again, you could increase those rates by $300 per year, subject to the maximum rate. And in year five on the residential side, the board would have hit its maximum rate. So we fast-forward to today and to what we're proposing in this 2021 EDC amendment. There's a couple of things here that we want to talk about. The first thing that, that we want to discuss has to do with the non-residential legislative change. So after the board amended their bylaw in 2019, and to deal with the legislative changes we spoke about, there was a further legislative change made with regard to EDCs by the government. And that change had to do with the non-residential phase-in. So a minute ago, I spoke about the non-residential phase-in being 5% above the existing rate, and then 5% for each subsequent year. What the ministry did with this change was, instead of only the 5% increase, similar to the residential, it gave a percentage increase as well as an absolute increase. So in this case, for the non-residential rate, you could increase it by 10 cents per year, or the already permitted 5%, 5%. And similar to the residential, you would do whichever is greater. So for some context, the existing phased-in non-residential rate today for your board is 67 cents per square foot. And this relates back to the phase-in chart we just looked at. The maximum phase-in would be 74 cents, so that would be in year five. The most the board would be able to charge is 74 cents. This amendment would immediately allow the non-res rate to increase to 74%, 74 cents per square foot. That would occur if the board passed this amendment. And the new maximum would be 94 cents, so about 20 cents over what the maximum would be under the existing rate. So that would be the first thing that we're asking the board of trustees to deal with with regard to this amendment, would really be updating the bylaw to be consistent with the most current legislation and permit your non-residential rates to increase by 10 cents per year, rather than the 5% per year that they are increasing now. The next thing we want to look at with regard to the amendment is land values. So in addition to this non-residential legislative change, that was, like I said, was the first part of the amendment we wanted to deal with. Annually, the board, board staff asks an appraiser to look at land values throughout the region of Halton, and to ensure that they're consistent with what was, what was appraised and what was estimated in the 2018 background study. And when the board staff asked the appraiser to look at those land values this past winter, December and January, those land values had increased compared to what was estimated in the 2018 background study. And probably on a surprise, as, as we hear about what housing prices and what land values are doing in the GTA, this is pretty consistent with everything we've been hearing over the last year. So if we look at the chart on this slide, we see that the land values in 2018, and we're doing this by the three municipalities, Burlington isn't on there because there are no site needs for, for the board in Burlington. So when we look at 2018, Oakville about 2.37, Milton about 1.81 million per acre, Halton Hills about 1.59 million per acre. Fast-forward again to 2021, and based on the recent appraisals that were provided by Cushman and Wakefield, Oakville now about 2.83 million, so just under 20% increase. Milton at about 2.32 million, so about a 28% increase. And Halton Hills now over 2 million as well, at 2.02 million per acre, about a 27% increase. So as a result of these increase in land values, the board also decided to recalculate the charge. And what we did was increase the maximum rate that we referred to a couple of minutes ago. So again, the 2018 proposed maximum rates were the 3648 for residential and the 83 cents for non-residential that we spoke about a little while ago. Now, with the increase in land values, the new maximum EDC proposed rates would be $5,215 for residential and $1.21 for non-residential. So when we look at, at the new permitted phases, what we see, excuse me, there we go. What we see is a little bit of a difference compared to the existing phase-in. So now, we see that in year five, the board can go up to the $300 maximum, $3,769, as opposed to the 3648 that we looked at before. Same thing on the non-residential side. Now, the board can, as we talked about, go up to 74 cents immediately. In July, it goes up to another, goes up another 10 cents to 84 cents, and then next year to 94 cents. So again, quite a significant difference between what the board is able to phase in now and what the board would be able to phase in based on this proposed amendment. So just to finish off, your legal counsel, Brad Teichman, is here tonight, so he can address these, a couple of these topics in more detail. And I just wanted to add, in addition to the non-residential and residential issues that we talked about, and why the board is increasing the amendment or considering the amendment, there were also some other legislative changes made that deal with exemptions. And that's another thing that the board would add into this new amending bylaw. And then just to finish off, recommending that the board enact this amendment tonight, June 1st, 2021. If the amending bylaw is passed tonight, it would come into force five days later. That would be Sunday, and it would actually, the board would begin collection on June 7th, 2021. So happy to take any questions. And as I mentioned, Brad Teichman will talk a little bit more about the exemptions and any other questions that you may have dealing specifically with the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. On the speaker's list, we have trustee Intomasi, then trustee O'Brien. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Brad, with reference to your analysis on EDCs, that's quite of a, bit of a jump. Can I ask a question just to start? Did you, are you, is your company also responsible for doing the same review for our co-terminous board?
Good evening, through the chair. My name is Brad Teichman. I'm the lawyer for the board. The presentation you heard a moment ago was from Jack Amandolia of Watson Associates. It's his company that prepares the, the, the studies for the education development charge background study. But the answer is yes. Mr. Amandolia does this, the same work for the public board in, for the Halton District School Board.
Yeah, so my question was to Mr. Amandolia. I guess really the point that I'm trying to make is that, since this report is essentially the same, the only thing that changes the tables, and how do they apply to both our public board and our board? A couple of observations. Has anybody reached out to the builders group to see how this is going to be impacting the developers in our area, most specifically the smaller developers? And that's perhaps the people that are doing 510 houses a year versus the ones that are doing 3, 400, 500 houses? Has anybody had any feedback from them?
What we did do is, we met with the, with Build, which is the Building Industry and Land Development Association, which is an industry umbrella association which represents developers, large and small. So we reached out to them and provided them with all the information they requested, and the information which justifies the proposed amendment to the bylaw. So we don't meet, we could, we don't meet with individual builders, although we, this, the information about this amendment was publicly available, we didn't hear from any, we didn't hear from any. So it's more effective for us to, as I said, meet with Build, which is the Building Industry and Land Development Association. And then they circulate the, all the relevant information to their membership. But anyways, we did meet with the industry reps rather than the individual owners.
Yeah. Trustee Intomasi, we have other, we have other people in the queue. Trustee Intomasi, I can put you back in after trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brad, and gentlemen, for the great presentation. I'm still trying to understand EDC charges, like, I'm making some progress. So a question, Brad. When a developer develops a problem, a neighborhood, and we make EDC laws, for each unit, is there a EDC charge for the public board, as well as the Catholic board for that separate house? Like, does every house get a Catholic and public EDC charge?
Yes, sir.
And is there a big difference between what we get and what the public board gets for each unit?
Well, okay, so I can tell you today, the charge for your board is approximately, is $3,169. For the public board, it's $4,892. So it's about approximately $1,700 more, the, the public boards is about $1,700 more. That's, that's That's, that's usually the relationship between the two.
Okay. So a question with that, is that because they are just a bigger board and there's a more likelihood of that house would be used for the public board?
Um, well, because they're buying more sites than the Catholic board. I mean, the way the charge is calculated. And I'll say this very quickly. The consultants, uh, Watson and Associates estimate the number of new housing units that'll be built over the next fifteen years, all types of housing. They then calculate from that, how many students will come out of the housing use, the new units. They then determine how many school sites are required to accommodate the new students. They, we come up with, we have an appraiser value those school sites. So then we have the total cost to the board of acquiring those sites. We divide it by the number of building permits over the next fifteen years, and that's how the, the charge is calculated. That was a, what I just said is like ten thousand feet, but that's generally how it's done. The public board is buying more sites. So the, because they have a greater number of students. And therefore, when you divide the, the greater number of sites, the value by the same number of building permits, it yields a greater charge to that board than the Halton Catholic Board. I hope that's responsive.
It does. Uh, Mr. Chair, would you permit me one more question with that?
Uh, I was going to go back to trustee Antamasi because you asked yours and I'll put you in back after him. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Brad. Thank you for making the distinction that you're the lawyer and the report was made by, um, uh, Watson's. But so let me get back to Build. So I too was a member of Build. So my question remains, do you have any response or any commentary that's been provided to you from Build on this proposed increase?
Yes, um, Bill, we, yes, we do. Build is not opposing the increase.
Uh, follow up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please proceed.
So they're not opposing it because it's really up to us. But what is their feeling? Is it going to ten percent as opposed to the five percent? Is that going to impose hardship on some of the smaller developments because, developers? Because it's been my experience that it does, simply because you know how financing is these days. And to come up with that money upfront, it's, um, it's, you know, it's a great weight to small developers.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. And I understand your concern. Um, I, I don't know. I can't say like, you know, every developer, large or small, is going to have a different pro, pro forma for their different developments. But, um, build, these developers want schools. That's a marketing tool to sell their houses because people do not want to move into subdivisions where there, you know, there's not access or at least reasonable access to a school. So Build accepts that the school boards need these charges to collect these charges in order to, to be able to buy school sites for their kids. And they recognize that land values are appreciating rapidly. And that's the reason for the increase in the charge. Because right now, the, the, the charge the board's collecting is not, doesn't match the cost of the, what the board's going to have to pay for school sites next time it buys this, um, a school. So it's, listen, this is, um, like the, the, the EDCs are a tax and they, it can't be fine tuned any greater than we're doing now. You know, we can't fine tune it to account for small developers versus large developers. And right now, uh, for what it's worth, like, there's a huge demand for sites, uh, for, for homes. So it's a seller's market. They typically are able to pass on the cost of EDCs to the ultimate consumer, which is the homeowners. I'm not sure that makes it any easier for the homeowners, but, um, this, this is a cost really for developers of doing business. So I hope that's useful.
Um, do I get a point of clarification, um, Mr. Chair, or do you want to move on? Listen, get back to me.
Uh, I can come back to you. Trustee O'Brien's back in the queue. I can put you in behind him. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair, to Brad. So just to follow up on that difference between the discrepancy between the public EDC and the Catholic EDC on the same unit. Um, you mentioned it was calculated on the fact that they do buy more land for schools in an area. Is the, um, is the, uh, student population ever calculated into that? For example, if we have denser populated schools, uh, wouldn't we qualify for a, um, a higher EDC charge in relation to the public? Like, is it just related to land and uh, it's number of spot, number of sites?
Well, that the greater the number, the larger the school is going to be in terms of the number of students, the larger, uh, the larger the school site. So if you have five hundred and one students, you can buy a site of five or six acres. So it all depends if the, if the public board is, has, uh, site schools that have more students per acre per building than your board does, then it's, um, their charge will be more. Or if yours, if you have three story schools with more students, then you'll have more land and your charge would, it might not be greater because they're buying more sites, but that would bring the two charges closer together. And, um, so I just wanted to add one other thing, just in response to your questions and the, the gentleman before the trustee. Um, if I could just say this, the, the, these charges are in the thousands of dollars. The charges that are paid to the area municipalities in the region are in the tens of thousands of dollars. Like the charge for a single detached house for, that, that I get in, in the region of Halton that they would have to pay, a builder would have to pay today upon issuance of a building permit is, you know, let's say eight thousand dollars approximately to the school boards, eight thousand dollars. The charge that he's going to pay to the air, to the local municipality in the region of Halton is going to be between fifty and seventy five thousand dollars. So the school board charges really pale as, pale in comparison to the municipal charges. I know that. I just wanted to interject that. Um, but in, in response to your question, sir, yeah, the, the number of students, like the more, the larger the school is going to be, the greater number of students, the larger the site the board can buy and the larger the site, the more expensive it'll be, and therefore the greater the charge will be.
Okay. And thank you. And through, Mr. Chair. Um, Brad, you mentioned the fact that builders see a school site as being like, um, a selling feature for a neighborhood. If that, if that is the case, then, um, why do they not have to then pay the EDC charges right up front? So we're not always chasing them down or trying to collect them?
Well, no, no, we, they, they're required upon the issuance of a building permit for a dwelling unit. Someone puts up a house, they've got to pay the char, they have to pay the charge prior to the building permit being issued. So we don't chase them, like they can't get their building. The municipality is not required to permitted, it's not permitted to issue the building permit until they have paid the education development charge. So we're, we're fairly secure in collections.
Okay, thank.
Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Again, Brad, if I can call you Brad.
Sure, please.
So we know that, uh, development is, um, it goes through a central planning process so that when, uh, certain areas are designed or designated for schools, we know that it's part and parcel of the development. So, um, insofar as your statement that, um, uh, schools are, uh, attract people, home buyers. I mean, that's, you know, it's somewhat immaterial in that they're required to, to reserve space in a large development, um, piece of land to, to, to house schools. Um, I'm really concerned about going to ten percent and the reason, really, this is really a decision this evening about whether, um, your recommendation that allows us to go to ten percent vis a vis the regular five percent, which was passed, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen. I'm very much concerned from a, from a developer, developer's point of view is how do you come up and budget with all the materials costs that have gone up three, four hundred percent? And, and now we're going to add more money, um, to the purchase of the home. And, um, you know, is this going to affect people moving into the area? So I, I really find it difficult to believe that the builders, um, would not say anything about, um, going to the ten percent vis a vis the five percent. Just want your comment on it.
Yeah, no, and, and thank you, sir. And I'll just clarify, it's not ten percent versus five percent. It's increasing the charge by five percent or increasing the charge by ten cents. So.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, my mistake.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So the thing is, and, and I understand your concern, sir, for the, for the industry and homeowners. But I don't have the precise number, but I know superintendent loss would have a better idea, but I know the board's education development charge account is in a deficit position, which means more money has been spent than has been, than has been collected. And, and the reason for that is because land values are escalating at a greater rate than the board is able to increase its charge. It's because we could only increase the charges once a year. You heard the presentation on that point. So there is a significant deficit in the board's EDC account, is my understanding. And we're trying to sort of erode that deficit by catching up because land values, as you know, that they've taken off, um, in recent years. There's been no decline. And the, you know, the cost to buy land goes up, but the charge is going up. The charges are going up by a smaller amount. So the boards are falling behind and it, I, I. So anyways, it's, it's difficult to answer it. I guess it's what's the priority, the board's finances or the, you know, the position of, of developers and consume the homeowners. It's, we're, we're trying to reach that balance. Uh, thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Straight that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question more like a comment. I would say that the importance of understanding that we're talking about an increase of ten percent versus the ten percent from five to ten is a very important distinction. And if we're talking about, uh, ten cents, it is also a very important distinction. Uh, with respect to Mr. Eichmann's last comment, I would think that the board finances uh, would take a priority, although we have to be mindful that the increases, the increases that we do contemplate have to be reasonable. And in this particular case, considering the deficit and the EDC charges, considering the fact that the increases, um, are characterized as they are, I would say and think that, um, we're probably justified in supporting this motion. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, seeing that there are no other trustees to wish to speak, uh, I thank our presenters. Thank you very much. And, um, we'll move on to the next item. So we are now at, uh, item five delegations, uh, five point one declined delegations. There were three delegations that were declined for this evening. Uh, we have three delegations for this evening. Our delegates are on the line, uh, and I will let you know when to begin. Uh, first we have, uh, item five point two, uh, H, HCDSB student trustee. Our first delegation this evening is from Ms. Lemay. Please be reminded that you have ten minutes for your presentation and that you must state a script. That is a part of tonight's board's agenda package. I ask staff to assist me in keeping track of time. And at the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask clarification, uh, questions for clarification purposes. Ms. Lemay, if you're, uh, if you're ready, please begin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak to you about trustees on the board. The Education Act and the Municipal Voting Acts are quite clear that a trustee on a Catholic school board must be Catholic. Only Catholics can direct their taxes to the separate school system. Since nineteen eighty four, we have had open access at the secondary level. However, these families have chosen to send their children to a Catholic secondary school and as such must abide by the rules that exist. The CDFB policy one twenty six addresses student trustees. Under the, uh, section principles, note that the education is shared as shared responsibility with home, school, parish, and the extended Catholic education community. The board endos, endorses student representation on the board as a mean of, means of fostering the development of future Catholic community leaders. In the section on requirements, it is quite clear that the student must be Catholic. They attend mass regularly, have a letter of endorsement from their principal and parish priests. They should have beginning knowledge of current key issues affecting Catholic education. I know policies can be changed, but it is important to understand what you are changing them for. If we are to keep Catholic education in Ontario, we must protect it. One of the most important roles of a Catholic trustee is to protect, promote and preserve Catholic education. To this day, particularly at election time, we have people quite prepared to get rid of Catholic education. Quebec decided to go with a language best system. And so Catholic education was gone from a province where it started in the sixteen hundreds. Newfoundland lost their Catholic schools because of financial issues in the province. They do have private Catholic schools, but no funding for them. We have a long history of fighting for our rights to exist in this province. Section ninety three of the British North America Act of eighteen sixty seven guaranteed the rights to educate their children in Catholic schools. Without this guarantee, there would have been no confederation. Before that, it was the Scott Act or the Separate School Act. It is important to understand the history of education in this province. I would recommend that you read A Promise Fulfilled. OCSTA commissioned Michael Power to work on this project. It is a political history of Catholic education in Ontario with particular emphasis on the role of Catholic school trustees. The issue at hand is the desire of non-Catholic students to be trustees. Because the TAP property taxes go to the public board and therefore no one in that house can vote for a Catholic trustee. It seems to me to be an issue that is easily resolved. From what I understand, these students who with their parents have decided on a Catholic education wish to be trustees as they are looking at the bursary. It's much bigger than that. These student leaders have to be role models to all the students. The Education Act is quite clear that a board may establish a bursary. So perhaps something can be done for non-Catholic students and look for leaders among them, but not as trustees. Please remember, Catholic education is not ours to lose, it's ours to give away. Thank you. And I'll take any questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lemay. Uh, trust, uh, trustees, are there any questions for clarification purposes? I'll ask again. Trustees, are there any questions? Uh, seeing that there are no questions at this time, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, a response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving to our next delegation, which is five point three rationale for HCDSB de-streaming decisions relative to the ministry mandate and other factors. The next delegation is from Ms. Lorenko. Uh, you also will have ten minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Perfect. My purpose in delegating to you this evening is to request a staff report for trustees that clearly explains the advanced placement and international baccalaureate programs, the AP and IB programs offered by Halton Catholic and to provide clarity to the very confusing information presented by staff at the May eighteenth board meeting. I hope that the information I will share with you, along with the questions that I and many other parents listening on May eighteenth have, will help to inform. many other parents listening on May 18th have, will help to inform future decisions around the appropriate way to provide AP and IB math instruction. I've had at least one child in the AP program for the last six years, and have attended several AP information sessions. Never have I ever heard the AP programmer any of the courses described as they were on May 18th. That is, as an academic class with pre-AP curriculum extensions, or that the pre-AP students were clustered together in separate academic classes. Frankly, this argument seems to have been developed as a rationale for eliminating the pre-AP and IB courses. The pre-AP and AP courses have always been distinct courses with unique course codes separately timetable. It seems the board has confused the concept of a course with that of a credit. Staff repeatedly stated that the board has never given an AP credit. To my understanding, a course is a predetermined program of study with a set curriculum, and the credit is the recognition that the course expectations were met. The ministry sets curriculum expectations for credits that students earn towards a diploma and high school graduation. Local school boards may create their own courses, but to earn a credit recognized by the ministry, the course must meet the ministry's curriculum expectations at a minimum. The fact that the board has never given out pre-AP or AP credits is irrelevant and meaningless. There's no such thing. Presumably, the courses meet the ministry's expectations for an academic credit. But that doesn't change the fact that the courses are separate and fundamentally different. This is further evidenced by the fact that grade nine pre-AP math is a prerequisite for grade 10 pre-AP math, and so on. If the pre-AP and academic students were earning the same credit, couldn't they all move into the grade 10 pre-AP class? That doesn't make much sense, does it? Neither does say that pre-AP math is just academic math with pre-AP extensions. Parents have also been told that these courses are taught by AP certified or trained teachers. So if AP courses are de-streamed in the future, will they be taught by AP certified or trained teachers? This is a key element which needs to be addressed. The more elements you change in these programs, the more you threaten their integrity. Staff originally stated that the de-streaming, elimination, cancellation, whatever you want to call it, of pre-AP and IB grade nine math was part of the ministry's de-streaming mandate. The narrative then changed to say that continuing to offer these courses would not be in the spirit of the ministry's mandate. That language makes it clear that this is a board interpretation. The elimination of pre-AP or pre-IB grade nine math is neither in the spirit of or a direct ministry mandate. The mandate is to ensure students' pathway choices are not limited by streaming in grade nine. The de-streamed math course available to all students addresses that issue. Offering additional specialized or optional programming does not interfere with that goal. In fact, the ministry's been quite clear that their mandate is to eliminate the applied stream, and that specialized or optional programs such as AP or IB are entirely within the board's discretion to offer or not. So yes, the board could still discontinue these courses or cancel these programs. But why would you if you didn't have to? These programs provide excellent learning opportunities for students and increased enrollment to schools that offer them. While staff made it clear that the board has never granted a pre-AP or AP credit, they did make a point of stating how many AP students might ultimately write the AP college board exam. Staff projected how many of the incoming grade nines might eventually write the AP exam, I believe it was 96 out of 484, but did not explain how that number was calculated. I'd like to know on what basis that number was determined. Also, what is the relevance of that number as a percentage of AP students, or better still, total students in the grade? Staff also mentioned that every year, quite a few non-AP students write AP exams and earn advanced standing or university credits. However, no numbers were provided. I'd like to ask exactly how many Halton Catholic non-AP students, on average, earn a university credit by writing the college board exam. In talking about the elimination of grade nine programming, why was staff talking about an exam that students may or may not write in four years? And why do we care about students who write those exams despite never being a part of the program? How is any of that relevant to canceling the existing course? This is not the first time I've heard the board define an AP student by whether or not they were registered for a college board exam. All of this focus on those exams makes me wonder if the board is more interested in earning feathers in their cap or promotional data to attract new students, rather than the learning and development of current students. When I hear success measured by graduation rates or exam success, it makes me think the board doesn't have the right priorities. The end goal here is not high school graduation, exam success, advanced university standing, or credit accumulation. The end goal needs to be that all students are prepared for whichever pathway they choose, and that they are working towards achieving their full potential. None of that comes from writing an exam on one day. That comes from 14 years of appropriate learning and skill development. Admittedly, I'm not an educator, but I'm a bit unclear on what the curriculum extensions would be for grade nine pre-AP math. AP is an accelerated program. That's how it covers all the high school curriculum, as well as first-year university and four years of high school. Currently, the grade nine pre-AP math curriculum covers all of the grade nine academic curriculum, as well as some of grade 10. While teachers can differentiate the pace of learning, I don't know that it's possible for a student, or even a group of students, within a mixed ability classroom to move ahead through the course content, or how a teacher could possibly manage that. It also seems highly unlikely that all of the students in a de-streamed class would cover all of the content that pre-AP students currently cover, or even want to do so. So how and when would the pre-AP students get to the grade 10 content? Would it all be jammed in by extensions at the end? Or was the board planning to jam more into grade 10? I would expect that would then make grade 10 more challenging and out of reach for more students, which seems to be the opposite of what the board stated they were hoping to achieve by providing all students, who would previously have been in applied academic or AP or IB classes, with a common curriculum. At the May 18th meeting, staff stated that there were other boards planning to deliver the pre-AP IB in the same manner as Halton Catholic and others, but not many, who would continue to offer them as separate courses. But staff was not able to provide details. How does staff know what other boards are doing if they can't name them? I've confirmed that the biggest boards in Southern Ontario are indeed continuing to offer pre-AP grade nine math as standalone courses. I'm not aware of any boards that plan to deliver the AP curriculum within a de-streamed class, as HCDSB had intended to do. I'd like to ask the board for the names of the other boards that intend to deliver pre-AP IB math as curriculum extensions within a de-streamed math class. When asked about other boards, staff also mentioned that different boards were taking different approaches and meeting the needs of the individual families and the constituents of those school boards. I'd like staff to explain who decided on the approach that was right for this board, and what were determined to be the needs of our families and constituents. Were HCDSB families consulted? I'd also like to know if the secondary math teachers, who were to be expected to deliver the pre-AP extensions in addition to the de-stream curriculum, were consulted. I'd also like further information on and clarification regarding the de-streaming success in other jurisdictions. It was stated that Ontario was the only province that streams in grade nine, but I found at least one school board in Alberta that provides pre-AP and other advanced academic programming between grades seven to nine and AP in grades 10 to 12. It was stated that other boards are doing quite well with their pre-AP preparations in grade nine despite not having streamed programs. What is the evidence or data that supports that statement? Specific references were also made to data out of the TDSB, and the data that is shared across the country indicates that students are thriving in pre-AP math programs in a de-streamed environment. I'd like to know how thriving is determined or measured, and the source from which this determination was made. The discussion points that were presented prior to that statement were simply about marginalized students moving from applied to academic, but there was no other data about their performance in post-secondary, or secondary for that matter. Also, Toronto District has continued to offer pre-AP as a separate course, and will continue to do so as of September. With all of that, I'm hoping that staff can explain the statement that students are thriving in pre-AP math programs in a de-streamed environment, in TDSB and otherwise. Staff also mentioned that the ministry's mandate was not only to de-stream the curriculum, but to de-stream the populations within those classrooms. I've never heard of that term or concept. I'd like staff to explain what de-streaming populations means, and/or provide a ministry reference. The information provided at the May 18th board meeting resulted in more questions than answers, and I'm hoping that trustees will request a staff report to provide clarification and address these many questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenko. You finished exactly at 10 minutes, right on the nose. Very impressive.
I am impressed myself.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Trustees, are there any questions for clarification purposes? I'll ask one more time. Trustees, are there any questions? Seeing that there are no questions at this time, I thank you for your delegation. A response will be dealt with under Agenda Item 8.1.
Thank you.
We're moving on to 5.4 delegation, cancellation of pre-AP grade nine math. Ms. Quinn will be presenting. Ms. Quinn, please, you have 10 minutes, and please begin when you're ready.
Dear members of the Board of Trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board, my name is Mary Frances Quinn, and I am a grade eight student at St. Marguerite du Ville School in Oakville. At the May 18th regular board meeting, you heard from my mom and my sisters, who asked you to change your decision and keep the grade nine pre-AP math program. Today, I am here myself to speak to you as well. One of the questions that was asked in the meeting to my sister was how not having the pre-AP math program would have hurt her interest in STEM and being challenged in math. In elementary school, there are people in my class who are not very interested in math. They don't pay attention to the teacher, don't finish their homework, and don't study for tests. I tried very hard in math. I write good notes and spend hours doing my homework and studying for tests. I applied for the pre-AP math program because I saw how well my sisters had done in math. This year, my sister Charlotte got a perfect grade in grade 10 pre-AP math, and my sister Adelaide got accepted into some great universities in Canada and the USA to study math and science. I know that the pre-AP courses are advanced and can help me to do well, too. If I have to be in the same classes with students who are not interested in math next year, like in elementary school, I don't think I will have the same opportunity or experience that my sisters had. I think if we want to help students to do better in math, that it should start in grade two or three and go up to grade eight, and not by keeping the pre-AP math in grade nine and beyond. I think if you do that, there'd be more students like me who'd want the challenge of pre-AP math. With so many students I know who have to go to Kumon or other trish for math, I think students need more help at younger ages, and I don't think that keeping me or other students out of pre-AP grade nine math is going to help those struggling with math. But I do think that canceling the pre-AP grade nine math will hurt us students who were selected for it. Shortly after I submitted my delegation script, we received very fortunate news that my fellow students and I will be able to keep our pre-AP math program for the upcoming school year. Thank you for making the right decision that supports us. I really hope that you continue to offer pre-AP math, as well as other subjects for grade nines in the future years to come, so that more students will continue to achieve their potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Are there any questions from trustees for clarification purposes? Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but the delegation was very clear. I just want to thank Ms. Quinn for demonstrating your love for math and coming in presentation. Really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. I'll call one more time for any questions. Seeing that there are none, I thank you very much, Ms. Quinn, and a response to your delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item 8.1. Thank you. So we're moving on to approval of the minutes, 6.1 minutes of May the 4th, 2021, regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? May I have a mover for the minutes?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by Vice Chair Duarte. We'll call a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo.
Sorry, can you come back to me?
Yes, I can. Trustee Intomasi.
I'm against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte, Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee.
Trustee Guzzo.
Favor.
Sorry.
I get how the A and the G kind of must mess you up a little bit.
You've been talking to my grade two teacher again. Trustee Murphy approves, is in favor. Motion carries. We're moving on to item 6.2, minutes of the May 18th regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by Vice Chair Duarte. I will go to recorded vote. Trustee Intomasi.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Item 6.3, minutes of the May 27th, 2021 special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by.
Trustee Guzzo.
Trustee Guzzo, second. Call a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
Vice Chair Duarte. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. Moving on to item seven, business arising from the previous meeting. 7.1 is a summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. The chart is provided for your information. Moving on to action items, 8.1, response to delegation. In accordance with our board bylaws and policy I 06, delegations to the board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to receive the delegation as information, defer the matter to a future meeting, request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting, or make a decision today on this matter. I will now open the floor to trustees who may want to put a motion regarding our first delegation, which was item number 5.2, Halton Catholic District School Board Student Trustees, presented, delegated by Ms. Lemay. Let me look at our list. We have Vice Chair Duarte.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept it as information.
So we have accept as information moved by Vice Chair Duarte. We have a seconder.
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Carabella.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Okay. We will we don't have, we're not discussing, right? Acknowledge, trustee.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, sorry, you're going to open the, I got lost there. We'll now open the floor for discussion on this motion. In the queue, I see, sorry, my apologies. I'm getting timesey.
Just a simple statement that we do have this policy coming up shortly, and decide over there. So just appropriate to kind of receive it as information right now and have a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. Trustee Intomasi, did you want to speak to this matter? I see that your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I was, I jumped the gun. I wanted to speak to 8.2. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we, if nobody else would like to speak to this matter, as receiving this as information, we can move to recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata.
In favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
Favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's also in favor, so we, the motion is moved. We will receive 5.2 as information. Going on to the next delegation, which is 5.3, Ms. Lorenko's delegation. Do we have a mover?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Duarte.
I would like to deal with this item. I have a motion which I can put forward.
Okay, sorry, sir, to go back to trustee Intomasi, you had your hand up. What was it in regards to?
8.2, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sorry, okay, can you remind me?
Will do as long as I'm not ruled out of order.
Sorry, trustee, Vice Chair Duarte, you moved to receive this as information, is that correct?
No.
Oh, sorry, you have a motion.
I have a motion to put forward. Should I send this motion to Rosie or?
Yes, please do. It'll give Ms. Swindon some time to bring it up.
It's a simple one-liner. Be it resolved that the director directs staff to prepare a staff report to address 11 questions in bold text raised in the June 1st delegation by Ms. Lorenko to be presented at the first board meeting in September.
Okay, do trustees require that to be reread? In the meantime, Ms. Swindon will put it up on the screen once she.
I'd like that, Mr. Chair, please.
Okay. Vice Chair Duarte, could you please reread the motion?
Be it resolved that the director directs staff to prepare a staff report to address 11 questions in bold text raised in the June 1st delegation by Ms. Lorenko to be presented at the first board meeting in September.
I will second that, sir.
Seconded, yeah.
Okay, so seconded by trustee DeRosa. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor to open debate.
Mr. Chair, so let me just turn. Okay, Mr. Chair, we had several delegations on retention of the pre-AP program, and a decision was made prior to last board meeting, we know that, to reconsider the pre-AP math courses as it was originally run. However, at the last board meeting, we had a robust discussion on the topic, and lots of statements were made, some of which were not adequately justified and clarified with data, and this has prompted this delegation to be present. Our delegate tonight, Ms. Lorenko, has taken the time to come and talk to us all about the concerns, which also echo the concerns of parents and students, and hence I would like to request a detailed report from staff to clarify and explain the questions presented in the delegation, which are in bold text. All these questions are quite valid, and it will be helpful to have them in one place in the future reference to parents. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll open up the floor for questions. Are there any trustees who would like to speak to this motion? I'll call for trustees one more time. If not, we'll move to a recorded vote. Director Daley.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just so trustee Duarte would, and he would know this seeing staff reports that we generally produce, this will not look like, I doubt it will look like a staff report as board would normally receive. So if the direction is to answer, give 11 answers to 11 questions, we can certainly do that, but that wouldn't traditionally be a staff report we would give to explain programming, but happy to do it at the direction of the board.
Sure, Mr. Chair, it's acceptable.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. In this whole area of A, B, and AP and IB, I always like to look for research, and I did find one research document by someone named Park in 2012, and they really talked more about the IB, we could concentrate on AP, but I'd like to take a look at IB for a minute, and it mentions in this rigorous research study about finding the difficulty of belonging. So when program participants are unable to identify with elements of their homogenousity or norms or values determined by the group, disengagement with their cohort or their program is reported. This is spoken of in relation to perceived academic and social images, specifically mentioned in relation to the IB program. Three studies report tension between IB students and their non-participant peers resulting in negative stereotypes. Again, I'm delighted to see that we are using the same format this, next year as we did this for IB programs, but to dismiss the program lightly, I do think trustee Duarte's motion does really speak to how important it is to engage the community before we make any such changes. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Daley, you have the floor.
Yeah, just to clarify with trustees with regards to IB, because the IB program and the AP courses, IB, AP program are quite different. In the IB program, students do study a common set of courses. So in AP, where there's much more selection, a student can select one AP course or several AP courses, and the IB program, students don't have that, that choice. Again, I think the questions that we've received and answering them, as stated, won't necessarily shed more light on how either of those programs operate, but we'll be happy to bring back the report as requested.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any more trustees who would like to speak or any questions? If not, we'll let Vice Chair Duarte close.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please, go ahead, you have the floor.
So my question is to Vice Chair Duarte, the report that you're seeking, what would be the parameters? What are we looking to have staff report to us on? Simply because the report is generic in its terminology, so can you provide for the board what it is, before we go to a vote, what it is that you're looking to find from this report?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
So if we look at the presentation, which is in our package, there are 11 questions in bold in various paragraphs, and they, some of them need references and data. We provided with that, so it's not, I mean, at this point in time, we won't get that data, some research will have to be done, and so looking to have those answers, those questions answered in detail, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. So answering those questions may not get to where we want to, or the kind of information we're seeking to make the decision. We're hoping to make a decision whether to continue with the de-streaming process and/or cease it and return back. I would submit to Vice Chair Duarte that I think we need to be specific. We're not, we don't want to send staff on a wild goose chase and report on all these items, but it doesn't really get to where we want to go. So I'm just wondering if in his motion, he can stipulate what it is that he's looking for and give some terminology and give some parameters by which staff is going to be reporting. Thank you.
I can answer that.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
So, Mr. Chair, so this, this motion specifically speaks to this presentation, this delegation that is done. There are certain requests put forth by Ms. Lorenko in her presentation, and I think it answers to this. I think let's stay focused and answer one thing at a time, and that's what my motion is focusing, really on this particular delegation. The other student delegation is different, and so we could deal with it differently.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any more questions? If not, trustee, Vice Chair Duarte, please close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My closing is very simple. So my request is for a report to be provided with detailed responses, the questions asked by our delegate, Ms. Lorenko, and some, I was thinking that we could get some answers tonight, but that's fine. A request in writing as a report will do well with proper references and data to back up those answers, and I would request my colleagues to support this request for a report, which will also be a good reference for our parents in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we will now go to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Hern Churnata.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guber.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. So we are now looking at response to delegation 5.4, cancellation of pre-AP math from Ms. Quinn. Vice Chair Duarte, do you have your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes, I would like to deal with the item tonight. I have a motion, and I'm sending that motion to Ms. Swindon right now.
Okay, could you, in the meantime, could you read your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just turn my camera on. Okay, the motion is this. Be it resolved that any future proposed changes to the AP and IB programs, whether initiated by the ministry or otherwise, be brought forth to the Board of Trustees for approval in advance of, as well as following community consultation.
Could you, could you repeat that?
Be it resolved that any future proposed changes to the AP and IB programs, whether initiated by the ministry or otherwise, be brought forth to the Board of Trustees for approval in advance of, as well as following community consultation.
I will second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seconded by trustee DeRosa. If you look in the chat box, I believe you'll, you'll see the motion there. First, we'll have Vice Chair Duarte open, then on the speaker's list, we have, first we have trustee Guzzo. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we all know that the government's effort to do away the streaming for grade nine has begun with math courses starting this September. There is a pilot project to de-stream grade nine English and geography classes this fall, so it's quite possible that other courses will be de-streamed, one course at a time. There is a talk of de-streaming of the grade 10 or 11. In any case, that will apply to academic and applied courses and will not apply to AP and IB programs as we have seen as of now. The AP and IB program should be looked on as enhanced programming that we provide our students, and together, we should look to bring many more such programs to our board. These courses, as we all know, are widely respected for their rigor, and IP-led universities in the US, as well as Canada, McGill, and University of Toronto, for example, will accept these students for admission to their institutions and are recognized for credit by Canadian universities. Many of our students have a burning desire to work hard and put in the extra effort to compete nationally and internationally beside students from our boards providing AP and IB programs in order to achieve their dreams, and we have a student delegate tonight. Due to the high demand for, for AP programs, for example, Milton, the pre-AP grade nine selection process starts in month of November, December timeframe with a written test because there's so much of demand, and the results are declared in the month of February. Students had to write an essay for the pre-IB selection process, and I'm sure it does take a lot of time for students to prepare for that. We should give our students and parents the opportunity and confidence to plan their career path and strategy as well in advance, rather than have them enroll in a program that is perceived to be existing and then change course mix. We should allow our students and parents to decide to continue, make a decision to continue at HSDST or go to every board which offers these programs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little concerned, not on, on the intent of this motion, but just the fact that it's specific to AP and IB programs, so I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to remove the AP and IB portion, so it would read, "Future Proposed Changes to Programs, Whether Initiated by the Ministry or Otherwise, Be Brought Forth to the Board of Trustees for Approval in Advance, As Well as Following Community Consultation." And I do have a question, once we're done that, on trustee Duarte's, the community consultation piece, so.
Okay, so we have a proposed amendment, we're striking out, well, as you can see it, you can see it there in the chat box, do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew.
Seconded by trustee Agnew, okay. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor to open debate.
Really, Mr. Chair, I don't need to have a lot of conversation. I think it's pretty clear. I think it shouldn't just be specific to AP and IB. I think if we're going to be looking for community consultation, it shouldn't just be limited to one set of programs. That's all I have to say, but I do have a clarifying question for trustee Duarte. He's putting community consultation. I just want to understand what type of community consultation? Are we looking for feedback? Are you looking for full consultation? That could be quite lengthy, and, and I think we need to understand what exactly it is he's asking.
I can answer.
Okay, so we have, we have Vice Chair Duarte's going to answer, and then Director Daley would like to make comments.
I was going to answer that question, but I'm, so I'll just give a, an overview. So there is a draft guide put out by the Ministry of Education as for how to implement de-streaming, and it clearly specifies how the consultations will be done. So I'm not an expert in this, and I think Director Daley has his hand up, so I'm referring to that particular consultation that was referred to in that particular document. So I'll pass down the question.
Director Daley, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm not going to comment on that, but we do have a policy, an existing policy on community consultant, or community engagement and public consultation. It does speak to when changes are made to a specific, specific courses or day-to-day impact. There is a bit of a descriptor of the levels of engagement. So certainly, if we didn't adequately follow that policy in this particular case, we, we will do so going forward, but I'd suggest when we talk about community engagement and public consultation, we use the policy that we have in place.
Then can I further my amendment to that? Then I'd like to include that in there.
Actually, I'll have to refer to our parliamentarian. Your amendment has been seconded.
Right.
Parliamentary Kapoor, what would be the procedure of making a further change to that amendment?
It appears, Chair, that that amendment is talking about a different section of the motion than the amendment we're currently doing, which is regarding what programs it applies to. It sounds like the trustee wishes to make an amendment clarifying what community consultation is, refers to, and I would suggest you do that as a separate amendment. If I'm, if I'm understanding the, the intent. if I'm, if I'm understanding the, the intent of the Second Amendment correctly.
Yes, I believe you are. Good, good point.
It is, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good point. We'll take your advice. So currently, we're dealing with the amendment which strikes out AP and IB. We have a speakers list for the amendment, which is trustee Agnew, Carabella, and DeRosa. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm, okay, I wanted to make an amendment to the amendment. Can I do that at this point, or?
Yes, so we can have a second amendment. Is that correct, Parliamentary Kapoor?
That is correct, Chair. If it relates to Duarte.
tertiary amendments, right.
This is a secondary amendment, if it applies to the section that the current amendment is dealing with.
So it would, the amendment would have to deal with trustee Guzo's amendment of striking out AP and IB? Or it could be on a different subject in that?
It would need to be on the same topic as the current amendment, which is currently removing those four words. If it's on a different area, it's subject to the same restriction as to trustee Guzo's Second Amendment, which is on a different area and would need to be dealt with separately.
Okay. So trustee Agnew, is it, is your amendment regarding the striking out of AP and IB?
No, it's not. I wanted to strike something else out.
Okay, so we'll have to deal with that afterwards. Did you have any question or comment to make apart from that?
So yeah, just, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So just to comment to that, and just to agree with trustee Guzo, I think that it's important that regardless of what the program might be, whether that be, again, what's before us obviously is AP and IB, but any other programs that impact our staff and students that are being changed or proposed to be changed, there'd be an opportunity for the community to be consulted as they are the ones being impacted. So I would be supportive of, of that amendment. And I, would you like me to go back in the queue for my amendment to?
So yes, so, so right now, we're, we're working on a speakers list for the amendment. There is a speakers list for the main motion, which has trustee, trustee Guzo on it only. But, but once we go back to that, you can go on.
Great. So I'll put my hand up in the chat, Mr. Chair, and you can slide me where you see fit.
Okay. An air traffic controller tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Trustee, can I have a point of order, please?
Yes.
This whole matter of responding to delegations and a motion be put, put forward, and then changing the motions, can we have the parliamentarian rule on this? Simply because to me, and we've ruled that on previously, the response to delegation is scripted. We're deviating from our bylaws, and we're going in a totally different direction. This particular motion, or Vice Chair, Vice Chair Duarte's motion speaks to a stakeholder's input. We're trying to generalize it and cover every area of curriculum. And I don't think this is appropriate at this particular time. So can we get input from parliamentarian Kapoor? Thank you.
Yes, so.
I don't, I'm sorry, I missed the point of order piece. What was the order?
We're moving, okay, so I will restate it, Mr. Chair. We are moving from our scripted response to delegations under Agenda Item 8.
So Parliament, Parliamentary Kapoor, can you provide some advice? We have dealt with this matter before regarding making amendments during response to delegation. Is it appropriate to amend a motion that was moved as a response to delegation?
Thank you, Chair. You're correct that the board has previously decided that to change one type of a response to a different type of response by amendment would not be proper. For example, we're currently dealing with a motion of the type, a motion to make a decision on the matter at this same meeting as the delegation. So changing that to receive for information by amendment would be out of order. However, once you're dealing with a motion on making a decision, amendments to that motion would probably be in order. The only restriction, Chair, would be whether we have gone beyond the bounds of what the delegation is discussing. So the question, which is a judgment call for you, the chair, to make, would be whether these amendments take the bounds of this motion beyond, whether it's going beyond a decision on the matter that was delegated.
So the matter. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, I'll, I'll stop there and let you ask.
So the matter that was delegated was very specific to pre-AP math. So if I take your advice, then the amendment, as it is now amended to cover all courses, would then be, would be out of order?
That would be a decision of you as the chair. That's, and that is a reasonable interpretation to rule that this particular amendment is out of order.
Okay. I will take the parliamentarian's advice.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair, from the parliamentarian.
Yes, please state your question.
So, hold on, sorry, my speaker's off. So it still deals, the change, the amendment that's proposed still deals, still deals and speaks to the delegation that was at hand. So how is it, it just broadens the scope. So how is it that it's not still dealing with the delegation at hand?
Parliamentary Kapoor?
Thank you, Chair. The question is regarding the scope of the delegation, of the delegation and the scope of the motion. The chairs, in the chair's ruling, the chair decided that the delegation referred to AP and, I presume, IB, and that expanding it to apply, this motion to apply to all programs, not just AP and IB, would take it beyond the matter, the scope of the matter that was being delegated. That's a ruling of the chair. It's, it's the judgment of the chair that can be appealed.
My understanding, sorry, for pure clarity, that this delegation only dealt with pre-AP, not IB.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Chair, point of order.
Well, pardon me, pardon me, please. We're, we're dealing with one point of order from trustee Antomasi, and then there was clarification question asked. So my ruling is, I find trustee Antomasi's point of order to be well taken, and that the amendment covering all programs is not in order. And that, that is subject to appeal by trustees.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Guzo?
Based on your ruling, then the point about IB also isn't part of this delegation. This delegation specifically spoke to AP only.
Correct, to, to AP. So then.
And it also did not talk about stakeholder feedback.
That is, that is correct. So, so right now, we're dealing with, please, people. Right now, we're dealing specifically with the amendment. My ruling is that the amendment is not in order. Subject to any appeal, we'll go back to the main motion, and then we'll have to reexamine whether the main motion is in order or not. So revering, reverting back to the main motion, I would take trustee Guzo's point as valid, that the delegation does not address IB programs. Therefore, as written, that this amendment would, this main motion would not be in order. Can I get your opinion on that, Parliamentary Kapoor?
Chair, my opinion is, is not relevant. I think your ruling is reasonable, and I'll leave it at that. It's, it's, it's your, it's the chair's judgment. I don't wish to intrude on your territory, but I think, but it's absolutely a reasonable interpretation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a point of, a point of privilege. Can you just please recap for me? I, I lost the communication. So where are we now with your ruling?
So I found, I found your point of order to be well taken, that the amendment was not in order because it went beyond the bounds of the delegation. So now we're reverting back to the main motion. As I look at the main motion, trustee Guzo had made the point that the main motion includes the IB program, which again, was not part of the delegation. To be consistent in my ruling, therefore then, this motion as written would not be in order.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, point of order.
So, so, please, we have, so right now, we have Vice Chair Duarte called a point of order, so I'll deal with his point of order. Trust, sorry, trustee DeRosa, did you also have a point of order?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. It's a point of clarification, actually.
Okay, can I have your point of clarification?
On page 12 of the delegation, there's reference a number of times to the IB classes as well. So I'm just, wanna draw your attention to that.
I appreciate that. Let me, let me just verify that. I do thank you for bringing.
Chair, I understand that this is.
I believe that's, I believe that's a different delegation, trustee DeRosa. So therefore, it's not, it would not be in order. So now we revert back to Vice Chair Duarte, your point of order.
So, Mr. Chair, the delegation was on math programs and the de-streaming process, which is common to the AP and IB programs. If you, I mean, if you agree with that and allow this motion to go forward, I'll be okay. If not, IP, your ruling.
Okay, so your, your motion speaks about the entire AP and IB program, not specifically math. Therefore, my ruling would be that it's, that it's not in order.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you.
Okay, so we'll call a vote. I have, so I have ruled that the motion as written is not in order, and Vice Chair Duarte has appealed that decision. So if you're voting in favor of the appeal, then the motion would proceed as, as it's written. We'll go to.
Point of privilege, can we have that motion in front of us, please?
I think it's, it's in the chat box now, trustee Antomasi, if you can see it.
Mr. Chair, to clarify.
I'm sorry, I cannot.
Maybe we can scroll down. Yeah, maybe your sizing is different on your screen resolution. Ooh, sorry about that. So Ms. Winon will share her screen, and we'll be able to see it.
Mr. Chair, to clarify.
So there it is in front of you.
To clarify again, in favor, Vince?
So in favor means that the, so I have ruled that the motion is out of order. The appeal is that it is in order. If you vote in favor, you're voting to continue discussion on this motion, as it's, as it's written. Okay, so we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Could you return to me, Chair?
Yes, certainly. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern-Turnata?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Abode.
Opposed. Trustee Murphy is opposed. You have five to four, so the appeal carries. So we are now at, back to this point. On the speakers list, we have trustee Guzo and trustee Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And seeing as your, your decision to not have the motion reflect what the delegation is, I'd like to put forward my amendment again, to remove the AP and IB in the motion, because of the will of the board. Thank you.
You're making me exercise my Robert's Rules muscles today, trustee Agnew. So trust.
Trustee.
Trustee Guzo.
Trustee, trustee, sorry, Mr. Chair, based on the fact that I didn't appeal your decision, I used the same point of order with it, and then that point of order around the same principle was overruled. That means, based on previous practice, it doesn't have to be done again. And that means that I can make my amendment, because now there was a decision of the collective trustees that the motion doesn't have to be specific to the delegation.
Correct. So I'll just get Parliamentary Kapoor. So, so based on the will of the board, based on the success of the appeal, it would not be appropriate for me to rule against that will. Parliamentary Kapoor, can you comment on that?
That, again, sounds very reasonable, Chair. The, on the appeal, the board has apparently expanded the bounds of what is the subject matter under consideration. So your ruling to allow the amendment now is entirely reasonable.
Okay, thank you. So we have an amendment which strikes out AP and IB. This now becomes the new second amendment, oh, sorry, new amendment, not second amendment. Okay. So we'll have a new speakers list. Let me see. Oh, sorry, we need a seconder.
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew is the seconder. So now we will refer to trustee Guzo to open debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't need to repeat what I've already stated. So I think, I think it's important that proposed changes to any program, not just specifically AP and IB, I think is, is very important for our community and for our spec ed, everything. So we should be all encompassing.
Thank you. So on our new speakers list, we have trustee O'Hern-Turnata and then trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Hern-Turnata, you have the floor.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Carabella.
I think I'm on the list somewhere there from way back, back.
Yeah, you were on the, you were on the speakers list for the amendment, which was ruled out of order.
Okay.
Therefore, it was evaporated. But I'll put you, I'll put you on after trustee O'Brien. And then trustee DeRosa was after you on that other list. I'll put trustee DeRosa after you, if you think that's fair.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, trustee O'Hern-Turnata, please proceed.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. With this motion on the table, how is this different than current practice now, where future proposed changes come to the board table? Are you able to speak to that?
Director Daly?
Thank you, and through, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm assuming the, the intent of the motion is in response to a feeling that parents were not adequately, or trustees for that matter, adequately prepared for this, this past process. So I'm assuming that's why it's coming to the table. Again, without trying to complicate the situation, I would draw trustees' attention to our current policy, V18, community engagement, public consultation under requirements, new policies, or, or, sorry, information around the. information around the implementation of new programs, shared in advance of implementation. Stakeholders directly impacted by potential changes to existing programs will be notified. I'll be provided with pertinent information as becomes available and prior to a decision being made. Changes to legislation will be shared in advance of implementation with stakeholders who are directly impacted. So I, I think what's being suggested in this motion is could reasonably cover, be covered off in the existing policy. And I, I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I do not. That was answered wonderfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Daley, um, Director Daley, I'm, I'm just trying to digest the implications of this as well. And I know most of the programs, I think, in the board. So with this, um, amendment, do you see that digressing at all then from that policy? I'm, I, I think you just said that you didn't, it covers it all. Um, I'm thinking of special high skills major, dual credit, all these. Um, are you saying that we are already covered with our policy in those?
Director Daley?
Uh, I, I think the policy that I referred to is broad enough that it does. I, to be quite honest with you, trustee O'Brien, um, you know, we've got 26, 27 specialist high skills majors across the board. Uh, if we were going to phase one out at a particular school because of lack of enrollment or something like that, I think that does limit the ability of staff to carry out program implement, implementation. Um, I think what I'm hearing, or what I heard last week, what I heard tonight in delegation, what I'm hearing from some trustees tonight is, uh, that, uh, they, they and parents need to be informed of changes in due time. They need to be, have an opportunity, uh, to weigh in on it. I think the public consultation policy allows for that. Again, if it was not followed, uh, adequately in this particular, uh, instance, the message is heard from trustees. I'm not sure it's necessary to add, to, to have a motion to say, follow the policy. The policy should have been followed.
Thank you.
Trustee, O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
No, I do not.
Oh, thank you. Uh, we are almost at 10 o'clock. So trustee Carabella, before I go to you, I'll call a vote to extend past 10. Can I have a mover?
I can move it.
Moved by trustee Carabella. Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Uh, seconded by trustee Agnew. We'll move to recorded vote. Trustee Kelly? Trustee Kelly? Oh, sorry, thank you. In favor, uh, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Tomasi?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. We're extended to 10:30. Uh, trustee Bella, you have the floor.
Uh, did you say trustee Carabella?
Uh, yes, trustee Carabella.
Okay, thank you. There was a bit of a glitch there and I didn't want to, um, so thank you. Oh, hang on, I'll put on my, uh, camera. So I wanted to, to say that, um, I think that this motion should keep the AP and IB program in particular, uh, and all the delegations we've heard have been about AP and IB. They weren't separated, they were, uh, together. So I think it is germane that this motion does speak to AP and IB. And, um, I guess it's a learning curve we've had now that, about, uh, following, uh, policy V18. So that's going to be good. I don't see the harm in keeping it in this motion. Um, so I, I'm, I don't agree with, um, this amendment. I think that AP and IB should be specific, uh, germane to the, all the delegations we've heard. And if, yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Could you state your point of order?
Yeah, you've already ruled, decided, and it's been appealed.
Uh, okay, point is taken. Uh, Director Daley?
Um, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and if this is not in order, somebody tell me, please. Um, I, I just want to make it clear with trustees that at no point in the last three or four weeks, uh, did we indicate we're eliminating either IB or AP programming. Um, both of those programs are successful programs in the board, longstanding, successful programs. We're just initiating a new AP program at CTK in September, the pre-AP program. We talked about IB as early as 2007. When I got IB trained as the principal at St. Thomas Aquinas in 2010 to initiate that program, I think I was the first board member, or sorry, staff member, to actually receive IB training. So we spent a two-year process implementing that program to have it launched at St. Thomas Aquinas. It's still there. There is no intent to jam anything or jam curriculum anywhere, to cancel anything. Uh, so I, like, I just want to be, I, I just want trustees to be clear that those conversations have not happened at a senior staff table, certainly since I've been back here.
Uh, thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I'm delighted that Director Daley has, uh, has made those affirmations as clearly and as specifically as he had. So, um, I would not support removing, removing the AP and IB out of this, uh, motion because, uh, to trustee Carabella's, uh, point to this, um, these two programs, along with de-stripping, have been germane to the topic in all the delegations that we have, um, we have heard so far. So, uh, if we're hanging our hat on a technicality, um, I think we're here to make decisions on the basis of reasonability and, uh, process, not technicality. So I will not be supporting and removing these AP, uh, the reference to AP and IB. I will not support that. But I'm also, uh, encouraged, and I believe we should move on with this, with this motion, but I'm also delighted that, uh, Director Daley has categorically affirmed that there's no elimination of any programs here. Thank you very much.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just a comment to this, uh, and I hear what my fellow trustees are saying, but I think we also need to remember that AP and IB are two very distinct programs. Um, unless I heard something different, the delegations we heard this evening were with respect to the future of the AP program and de-streaming of the A, pre-AP math program. So I think what is being suggested here is not to eliminate that any AP, AP or IB programs, uh, cha- proposed changes come to this board, but that we take this opportunity to, to, to acknowledge that any programs, and, and I appreciate what Director Daley is saying, and I, I too am, am pleased to hear that, you know, those are not discussions that are happening at the senior level, um, to remove those programs. But if we're talking about bringing future proposed changes of any pro, of these two programs, why wouldn't we include any programs? And again, uh, let's look at other spec ed programs, structured teaching classes, CLC classes. Let's take a look at French, um, any of those items. And so I don't think it has any harm to it if we remove AP and IB, because they would just fall under changes to programs. So I don't understand what the harm there is. And by approving a motion that allows for capturing proposed changes to any programs, I think then we are making sure that, um, we're representing, um, all of the communities and having conversations about any proposed changes that are coming forward for any programs, uh, that may be happening.
Uh, thank you. Uh, trustee De Rosa, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would like to acknowledge the good points that my, um, fellow trustee is making with respect to, uh, you know, general decisions about programming coming back to the board. The fact still remains, though, is that tonight, what we're dealing with is a response to delegation that deals with AP, uh, and, and IB. Uh, when we put two delegations together, that, those are the programs at stake. And that's what we're trying to respond to. Uh, I think whenever, whenever, or on any other occasion in the future where programming changes are being made, we can deal with those pr- programming changes, uh, at the time. So I would recommend that we deal with the response to current delegations that we have in the spirit of which has been discussed. And, uh, bring this to a vote, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Guzzo, you have, uh, the floor to close. Uh, I'll just, I just want to make a quick comment. We have to get to item 8.2, uh, because it needs to be enacted. Uh, so I just want to make trustees cognizant of that. Trustee Guzzo, please close. Trustee Guzzo, you're muted.
Sorry, I had to turn my volume up. My apologies. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to be quick, but I'm really, I, I, I don't know, I'm at a loss. I, trustees gave a point of order that this change wasn't appropriate because it didn't deal with the delegation. So I upheld that ruling of the chair. Let the, removed, the amendment was removed. We went back, back to the original motion to go back to pre-AP, to the AP and IB piece. At that point, it was then, I made a point of order based on your ruling. It was appealed. The trustee sitting at this table decided that it didn't have to be specific to the delegation. So that's exactly what we've done. Now that being said, um, I don't understand how taking a motion and carrying and allowing it to encompass more or all of our students versus a small percentage. I am not trying to diminish either. I'm actually trying to increase the scope. So my role here is to represent all the students, and I see this as an opportunity to do just that. So saying AP and IB are one and the same, I would put money on it that I, either of those students in either program would argue that they are very, very different. They are not the same program. So that does not mean that they go hand in hand. So to say that they go hand in hand is inaccurate. Pre-AP is one course offered at select schools in Oakville, Burlington, Milton, and Halton Hills. And AP is offered at other, other schools. So I would really ask trustees to look at how many students we can use this, um, use this, uh, motion to cover. And I say, let's try to be all encompassing as opposed to only looking after a select few. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So trustees, debate on this matter is closed. Um, we're calling a vote on now, be, uh, being specific, the vote is strictly on the amendment, which is striking out the words "the" AP and IB. So we're voting on just the amendment. Then we'll revert back to the, uh, to the primary, the main motion. Uh, trustee Agnew, how do you, uh, vote?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Uh, vice chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Tomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Churnata?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Uh, and did I get everybody? Uh, well, trustee Murphy doesn't matter. So trustee Murphy's opposed. Uh, so the amendment fails. We revert back to the main motion. So the main motion is as you see it now. Um, I don't have anybody on the speakers list. Uh, so trustee Guzzo, are you on the speakers list for the main motion?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes.
So my question, my question is, do we know how many students the AP and IB programs this affects? I'm just curious to understand now that, uh, that this is the only, uh, program that's going to come to the board of trustees for approval in advance. So I'd like to know how many students this, uh, this encompasses across our board.
Uh, I don't know, Director Daley, if, if that number is at hand?
Um, um, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I, I think our grade nine cohort going into pre-IB at, um, STA next year is 100 students. Maybe four, I, I, 500 students going into AP. Um. Um, superintendent Cordero might know the more specific numbers. He could give them to us quickly if he's got them available.
And that's okay if you don't have them, uh, superintendent Cordero, we can get back to you with that number.
Sorry, trustee Murphy, I think that's actually quite important for me to make a decision on this motion. So I, if the numbers are available, I would like to know what they are.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's what I asked. If it, if it's available, we can edit. If not, then we can, we can get that number back to you. Superintendent Cordero?
Thank you, uh, Chair Murphy. Um, I do not have those exact numbers to share. I can share that we have going into September 2021, 100 students registered in the IB programming grade nine. And we have 484 students registered in AP programming in grade nine ac- across all four schools. And, uh, that's, that's the most specific, uh, information that I have of any one cohort.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
I do. Uh, my follow-up question is, is can I find out in the other special programs that the board offers, how many students would those, uh, would that be in? We'd be looking at. And that's for Director Daley, not for superintendent Cordero.
Uh, Director Daley, would you have an approximation?
Uh, I would. The, uh, I, I think it depends on what we mean by special programming. If we're talking about, um, or optional programming, um, because they might be two different things. Um, optional programming, we would probably consider extended and French immersion. Um, and there is a separate policy with regards to either movement, growth, or reduction in those programs. Uh, specialist high skills majors, I, I, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. That would be another program. Obviously, um, our, our, um, structured teaching classes at elementary, our life skills classes, uh, at secondary, we could consider that special programming as well. Uh, but I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. I apologize for that.
Would, uh, I know superintendent, um, no, this, uh, superintendent Bala is on. Would she be able to, uh, have an idea of what those numbers are?
Uh, superintendent Bala, would you have an approximation of those, uh, numbers?
Sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. I do not have those numbers available at this moment. I can get them for you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I do have a point of order. We're, we're going into a totally different direction. We're dealing with information that was never presented. We're discussing something that is already scripted and has already had a previous ruling. And now we're delving in information which wasn't part of the motion to start with. Or the, or the subject matter that was presented.
Okay, so I will rule on your point of order. Uh, I find your point of order well taken. However, the, um, uh, the trustees have, on appeal, overruled, uh, that exact same ruling. Therefore, it sets precedent to allow this questioning. Uh, trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I congratulate you on, uh, trying to respect the order of, uh, the speaker, speakers list. Um, the point I'd like to make, Mr. Chair, with respect to this, first of all, the programs that we have under discussion in this motion is AP. that we have under discussion in this motion is AP and IB and nothing else. We're not discussing AP and IB at the expense of anything else that may come before the board to be decided on at some point in time. In that regards, Mr. Chair, the numbers relating to AP and IB in terms of trying to justify or draw some comparison is really not the point. There was other things that we have, that have come before this board where numbers really are, were made irrelevant because the, the spirit in which we operate, I would like to think, is that no student is left behind. So the, the, the argument about the, the size of the, of the audience for AP and IB doesn't necessarily apply here. So AP and IB is what's in the front of us. That's what has to be decided. And no one is saying that any other program that may come into question in the future cannot be brought to the, to the board for the same type of decisioning. So I would respectfully request, Mr. Chair, that you take this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. At this point, I'm unable to take it to a vote because we have speakers on the speakers list. So right now, in the queue, we have trustee Carabella, then trustee Agnew. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. I will just say that during this particular delegation, Ms. Ruwenco did mention the IB program several times on certain pages. I just was scrolling through that. And, and then I'll, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. This, this was on a different delegation, was on Ms. Quinn. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I, I think it's important, and I'll explain why. So I just wanted to comment on where it says whether initiated by the ministry or otherwise. So I think that that's problematic because if it's a ministry initiative, it doesn't come to us. If it's a ministry directive, it would communicate to the Board of Trustees in advance of decisions or, you know, getting this community consultation in advance of these decisions being made. But I do think it's problematic to leave the ministry piece in there. So I would respectfully ask if we could amendment, amend it to just say to the AP and IB programs be brought forth to the Board of Trustees for approval in advance of.
Green, where we have struck out those words, that's, that's your intention?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Guzzo. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor to open debate.
Thank you, and again, through you, Mr. Chair. Hoping not to engage in a debate, but just wanted to make sure that we're being clear in the directive that we are putting down in this motion. And then again, we, I just caution trustees that if it is, if it is something that is coming down from the ministry, that necessarily wouldn't come to us for our approval because it's coming from a ministry. So I do think again that it's, if the, if the spirit behind this motion is to make sure that, or to hope, to ensure that future proposed changes to these programs are being brought forth, that's fine, but I just think we need to take out the, the reference to the ministry. That's all. Very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. On the speakers list, we have trustee DeRosa, then trustee Carabella. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I concede my turn, Mr. Chair, and I'll get back into queue if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think it should stay in there because as we saw this time, it was explained, or the email that went out to parents talked about being a ministry decision, but in the end, it wasn't. And I think we all, whether it's ministry decision or otherwise, we should be informed, and we should be very clear on it and make sure we are, are clear on it and have the information at the right time. So I think it should stay inside the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to point out, I, I think that it makes sense because when the ministry makes a decision, we can't, it can't be brought forward for an approval. And I think we need to go back to the way that this was miscommunicated, that the pre-AP and pre-IB was not ministry mandated to be de-streamed. After a lot of discussion back and forth, I believe it was finally clarified that that actually was not the case. And Director Daley rectified that last Thursday by leaving it in place. So pre-AP and pre-IB remain in place. And I think, I even heard him this evening acknowledge that, that communication would be going out in future based on our policy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is true that, you know, once the ministry mandates and dictates a particular direction, you know, there's very little that we can do other than maybe recommend or not recommend, whatever the case might be. It's, but in the spirit of this motion, the reason why it was put in there is, I would think, is because to avoid the situation that's, that's unfortunately has occurred. Any misunderstanding between what was in fact imposed by the ministry versus not imposed by the ministry? And if anything at all, it's brought back to the board for information purposes. I think that justifies retaining it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hearn Chirnata, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and I might be of order, and please tell me if I am. I respectfully request, so that we can finish debate and vote on this, or either withdraw the motion. I think Director Daley spoke to this and understands what we're looking for, and we're spending a lot of time on this when we have a full agenda. So I respectfully request that we move on or vote on it or withdraw it. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing that the only person left on the speakers list is trustee Agnew, who will close debates, we'll have trustee Agnew close, and then we will vote on the amendment.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So nothing, I mean, I've made my point, if it would make it easier for trustee, or if it would make it more clear, you know, I would suggest to take out then the word approval. And so what we're really ideally, again, looking for here is that these proposed changes are coming to the Board of Trustees in advance so that we are aware of them and that they are bringing, going out to the community, again, so that they are aware. And perhaps that is more the issue would be, if you want to leave in the whether initiated by the ministry or otherwise, is that we take out the word approval. That would be, I think, an appropriate piece. Because again, at the end of the day...
Mr. Chair, is that another amendment?
Hold on, I'm talking.
Please, Pete, please. So trustee, trustee Guzzo, sorry, trustee Agnew, at this point, we have an amendment that has been seconded. So, and, and we're closing debate on that, so we cannot remove any...
I wasn't making a formal amendment, Mr. Chair. I was just speaking to it as a suggestion. It wasn't a formal amendment. I was just talking about it in my closing comments for consideration.
Thank you. Are you, sorry, are you done, trustee Agnew?
Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
We will call a vote on the amendment. So just to clarify, trustees, we're voting strictly on removing the words that are, that are in red and struck out. Trustee Agnew, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed to the amendments, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Opposed, opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Chirnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Did I get everybody? Trustee Murphy is in favor. The, it's five to four, the amendment fails. So we're back to the main motion. We do not have anybody on the speakers list, so vice chair Duarte, you can close debate. Oh, sorry, trustee Guzzo, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment.
Please state your amendment.
Yes, I would like to remove the part where it says approval, for approval.
Okay. For approval is struck out. Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor to open debate.
Just very simple, Mr. Chair. Programming is considered operational. Again, just restating about the ministry piece, we cannot approve mandates from the ministry. We can only be told about them in advance. So I think that this motion is more in line with, with what this Board of Trustee can actually, Board of Trustees can actually do. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Programming decisions that have long-term implications are strategic and not operational. So I would not vote in favor of this change, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other trustees who wish to speak to this matter? Seeing that there...
I wish to speak to that.
Trustee Demasi, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. With reference to the comment made by trustee Guzzo that we do not and cannot change curriculum, she is incorrect. The ministry does allow boards unilateral decisions on matters that are specific to a particular community. As such, it's within our purview to be able to make changes with reference to curriculum, such as AP and IB, simply because the ministry allows for that. Thank you.
Demasi, I don't believe trustee Guzzo made any reference to curriculum. Seeing that there is...
Curriculum and, and the matter for us is the same.
Okay, so thank you for your comments. Trustee Guzzo, there's nobody else in the queue, so you'd like to close the debate? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. And thank you for clarifying. I did not make any mention of curriculum in my statement. I, I would appreciate if I'm going to be quoted, that I'm actually quoted accurately, and I could actually be quoted accurately if you go back into the feed and listen to the recording. Again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and, you know, we're on to, what, 10:30 at night, so this is great. I think, you know, this makes the most sense. Thanks.
We need to extend, Mr. Chair.
Open up the votes. Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm against the amendment.
Okay. Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Against, and we need to extend, Mr. Chair.
We're in the middle of a vote. Trustee Carabella?
I'm against.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Chirnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Sorry, thank you. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy's in favor, so the amendment fails. We have to vote to extend past 10:30. Can I have a mover?
I'll move it.
Trustee Carabella, a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. We'll go to recorded vote. Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Can you come back to me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I can. Trustee Demasi?
Can you come back to me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I can. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chirnata?
In favor. We have a long agenda.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Can you come back to me, Mr. Chair?
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Demasi?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so we will not be extended. We have to finish the motion at hand. We will be calling a special meeting this week to deal with the EDCs. For every day that the EDCs do not pass, it's thousands of dollars which the board does not get. So, yes, trustee O'Brien?
Point of privilege, small one. There is another item on the agenda, which is not time-sensitive but time-relevant. It's the one on stakeholder feedback. I just had asked for a report for the June 15th meeting. Just wanted to make you aware of that, in case you want to, might be good to do and include that in your, into the special meeting, just suggested, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
So, so we all, I'll comment on trustee O'Brien. We will, we typically will look at all things that are, that are time-sensitive and will deal with it. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you.
The meeting's ended. There should be no further discussion.
Yes, thank you for your input. So we are dealing with the matter at hand, which I've completely lost my train of thought now. Which was, believe me, isn't, isn't, isn't difficult. So we are dealing with the amendment? Sorry? Sorry, sorry, the original, we're back to the original motion. Thank you, vice chair Duarte. I have a good memory, but it's very short. So we have, nobody on the speakers list. Vice Chair Duarte, can you please close debate?
Sure. Mr. Chair, this is a very specific motion to deal with our student delegation tonight. We have to study all programs. We have to start striking out words from there. And as Director Daley said, I do not want to limit staff decision-making capabilities. And this motion calls for only AP and IB programs at the moment. We are in June right now, and the summer break due, shortly, our students and parents need to think about their plans and course of action during the summer months for the AP and IB programs specifically. We need to be fair with them and give them confidence in our system. The question parents and students would have to ponder is, do we stay with HCSB when there is no certainty of these programs? Or do we go to co-terminals board where the programs will be offered? Personally, we as parents and myself, I'm talking about, have no doubt about the decision I would make because all three of my children are in the AP program and have written exams. As I said before, there is prep time involved in planning for and setting up discourses and program selections start as early as November. If you do not make a decision and we not give our parents confidence right now, we will be discussing this very same item at the beginning of the academic year. These are specialty programs, pre-AP and pre-IB for grade nine. So my fellow trustees, all I am asking for is that we are notified of a decision to cancel a program well in advance, so that we do not have to wait to the last minute and have delegation after delegation come here like tonight. I'm sure trustees will see logic if the program needs to be canceled. Also, if the ministry mandates a change to the AP and IB program, we need not worry about it, as it will simply supersede this motion and make this motion non-admissible. So my colleagues, I would hope and like you to support this motion and give confidence to our parents and students that we will support them as we are here for student success. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, vice chair Duarte. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Demasi?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chirnata?
Opposed.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Duarte? And trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. We'll move to closing prayer. Trustee Agnew, I believe, is on closing prayer. Did you, did you notice how I didn't ask you? Did you, did you notice how I didn't ask you if we have to do closing prayer, Director Daly? Are you impressed in my growth? Did I say Agnew?
Correction, Mr. Chair, uh, closing prayer is, uh, Guzzo.
Sorry, man, I gotta, I gotta talk to somebody about this. My apologies.
Your job performance is coming up, Mr. Chair, no problem.
Oh, please, please, do the right thing. Uh, trustee, uh, Guzzo?
Just as, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up my, uh, my screen. I've lost it. I'm having technical difficulties tonight. One, sorry about this.
No problem at all.
Just keep going on for. Sorry, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize about that. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Father, I humbly come before you to ask for our children to have a heart of a servant and to want to obey those places authority in their lives. Guide us as parents to lead our children in a godly way and makes it easier for our children to go with us. I pray that as children, they do not conform to the evil ways of people. I pray that in their love for the Lord, they will hold fast to you and treat everyone fairly and justly. Amen.
Sorry, tha, thank you, everyone. Um, have a good night. So we'll be in touch regarding, uh, the special meeting. Take care.